On Facebook. It is now. What is Facebook?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
We are streaming live. We are ready to begin, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. This meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting is called at order Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. As a part of our opening, we will have the invocation by Mr. Chris Elverson and Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Curtis Joseph. Gentlemen.
If you would, please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today in order to serve our fellow citizens. We thank you for your many blessings and we ask that you grant us wisdom and give us guidance as we deliberate the business on the agenda today. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll begin with some opening comments and I would advise you to kind of listen. They've been tweaked just a little bit to be more informative to the process that we're going through today as we conduct this particular meeting. The Shreveport Cattle Metropolitan Planning Commission has determined that in order to protect the health and welfare of the public and to ensure the presence of a quorum of board members, it is necessary to conduct its regular meeting in a virtual setting. This meeting has been conducted under Louisiana Revised Statute 42-17-1. As such, we are limited in what we can consider today under this statute. Only agenda items which qualify under subsections A through D of this statute which appears on the public notice of today's meeting may be considered today. Under public comment procedures, we will follow these procedures. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on the application, please indicate as such using chat feature during the live stream. When prompted by the chairman, any members of the public wishing to comment on a specific agenda item should use the chat feature to indicate which agenda case number you wish to address and whether you will be speaking in opposition or in support. Public comments received in writing prior to the meeting will be read aloud into the records. Before addressing the board, please state the full name, mailing address, and zip code. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes will be allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Members of the public may request a copy of board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 8:00 p.m. on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items not requiring public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by indication in that chat feature of the live stream. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or parish commission or final decision depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as we relate to the matters you are concerned with. Copies of the document, of this particular document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available at shreveportcattlempc.com. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. At this particular time, we're down to approval of minutes for January 6th. I'm going to request a motion to postpone the adoption of the minutes from the January 6th, 2021 meeting of the MPC until the next in-person meeting of the MPC. At this particular time, all those in favor, vote yes; opposed, no, and I believe Mr. Daniel will proceed with roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would you allow Ms. Markeia Daniel to call the roll to ensure that you have a quorum to have a legal meeting?
That would be just fine, Mr. Daniel.
Ms. Smith? Smith? Mr. Roka? Ms. Neubert?
Mr. Joseph?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Ms. Baymar-Tow? Mr. Morton? Mr. Calvin? Mr. Andrews?
Here.
I have six who answered present. Mr. Roka? Ms. Baymar-Tow?
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Calvin's indicating that he's hooked on to the call. I don't know why you can't hear him.
It looks like Dale maybe had an audio issue, so he may try calling in on his phone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. Calvin. So we have seven present.
All right.
Hey, Winter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion. Since we have to do this remotely, we may want to go down these names in alphabetical order on the last name and that way we'll be prepared. It kindly was in different order and that way we'll know who we're after. Does that make sense?
I'm sure we could work towards that end at some point. Thank you.
All right.
Do you have a call, Mr. Chair?
All right, sir. Thank you very much. At this particular time, I'm requesting a motion to postpone the adoption of the minutes from the January 6th, 2021 meeting of the MPC until the next meeting that we are able to conduct in person. Will entertain a motion. All those in favor? All right, we'll, I'm sorry. I need a motion to... All right, we got a motion by who?
Second by Bessie Smith.
All right. All those in favor by roll call?
You have to have roll calls, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I operate remotely. You have to have a roll call to...
Who's asked for a roll call? Can you hear me?
Yes. All those in favor, yes, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Ms. Baymar... Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Morton?
We can see Mr. Morton on the screen. I don't know if he's muted or what.
Yes.
Ms. Neubert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We have seven yes, you're a no.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Daniel. The motion carried. At this particular time, I'd like to take a personal privileged point and ask Mr. Adam Bailey if he will come on, please. I believe he wants to say something to us relative to his role in Baton Rouge representing the Shreveport area with the APA.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. MPC board members, on behalf of the Louisiana Chapter of the American Planning Association, it is my honor and privilege to announce that the Executive Director of the Shreveport Cattle Metropolitan Planning Commission, Mr. Alan Clark, has been awarded the Louisiana American Planning Association's 2020 Achievement Award for Leadership. This award is presented annually to a professional planner who has earned their living in planning and has significantly contributed to the advancement of the planning practice over a sustained period of time through exemplary leadership and substantial accomplishments. Join me in congratulating Mr. Clark on this well-deserved achievement.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey, and congratulations, Mr. Clark.
Thank you so much, sir. That was a total shock. Took me a few minutes to collect myself.
Well, this is Bessie Smith. I don't see why it was a shock. You're doing a magnificent job. Just keep up the good work. God bless you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Well, Mr. Clark, we are very proud of you. I know you know that and we know what it's been like the last 24 to 48 months with this particular role that you're playing today. But you also need to know how much we appreciate you and being so patient to help us as we walk off into these uncharted waters that we're in, especially as late as today. And we thank you for that and leading the staff to get us to this point.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That was an entree for a speech, but it looks like you might go make one, too. All right, well, we'll entertain one towards the end of this meeting, so get your notes out. All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. As we move on forward, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be doing it just a little bit different, so I'll ask you to please bear with us because the material that I have in my hands has been presented to us for us to follow as late as the last 24 hours, so we'll do our best. We'll move into consent agenda item. We have just one. I'm going to, I would now like to request a motion to consider case number 21-1-SC Final Plant pursuant to subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute 42-17-1. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. All those in favor, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Can you hear me? Yes. Yes. Hello?
Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Neubert?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I have seven yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Daniel. Now, the consent agenda case that was just enumerated, because it's a part of the consent agenda, we will ask for a vote to approve and then we will move on to the next scheduled item on the agenda unless I'm misreading what I've got in front of me. So I need a motion to approve the item as presented on the consent agenda.
Motion to three?
Second.
The motion by whom?
Neubert.
Second by?
Bessie Smith.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Neubert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I have seven yes, you're a no.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniel. We'll now move into our regularly scheduled public hearing. And once again, I'll need to preface this with the material in my hand. I would now like to request a motion to consider case number 20-7-SP Preliminary and Final Plant pursuant to subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute 42-17-1. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require two-thirds vote and a majority and a majority vote to pass. At this particular time, I'm calling for a vote to consider. All those in favor, please vote. Roll call, please.
Do you have a motion?
Please give us a motion.
Second, Bessie Smith.
For purposes of the two-third cap, Ms. Andrews, we have a total of seven board members present.
Yes, sir.
For two-thirds, that will require five board members voting to complete the two-thirds requirements.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Neubert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I have seven present.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jeans, I believe we have a staff member that's going to share information on this, or do we have a member present?
Keith Howard, I believe, is on the line and would like to speak in reference to this.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just want to make sure I understand the procedure. It's rare new procedures, so we're going to, before we listen to anything about the case, we have to have a motion to listen. Is that my understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
And a motion to entertain it?
Let me, let me share this with you in that, we'll have to hold it up. The first thing we do is call for a vote. The second thing is if deferred is desired, a motion to consider must be taken up first. If motion to consider fails, request motion to be postponed.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. All right. We had a person that is going to speak in reference to this particular case. Please state your name, address, and zip code, please.
I see Keith Howard is on the line. I know he was interested in speaking about this case. I've asked him to unmute.
I am now unmuted. I am Daniel Keith Howard. I represent CAT Development and the development of Simpson Acres, Unit 4 on Simpson, off of Simpson Road in Cattle Parish. We have developed 35 lots in the previous units on Simpson Road. It has some real fine homes that have been built from a neighborhood of $275,000 to $500,000 apiece. We have 25 new lots going in. They will be for single-family homes, a minimum of 2,500 square feet. There will be no manufactured housing, no mobile homes, no modular homes or anything of this type put on these properties. The property was previously mistaken zone for manufactured housing, but we rectify all that with our subdivision covenants. We are very proud of our subdivision. We have a lot of real great people out there that have built nice homes and are looking forward. We have, we have 10 other lots that our people are waiting for once the final plant is okayed by the parish.
All right, sir.
May I ask him a question?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Bessie Smith. I noticed here where it said the plant would need to be signed by Cattle Parish Public Work Director. And it has to be recorded. It's in that last paragraph there. And you have one year.
We, we are, we are putting in parish streets. They're not private roads. So consequently, we have to have the signature of the parish engineer and everything on our plant.
Okay. And they are really some nice homes that you're building.
Thank you.
This, this is the finest African-American subdivision in Cattle Parish.
All right, sir. Any other comments you'd care to share with us? Hello?
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd care to share with us at this time?
Not at all. If anyone has any questions for me, feel free to contact me. We're an open book on this. This is a fine, fine place and it's going to be a wonderful place for 25 wonderful families.
Well, thank you very much. At this particular time, is there anyone else present who'd care to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak on behalf of this application? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone on whom you would care to speak in opposition to this application? Do we have any opposition to this application? All right, hearing none. At this particular time, we'll entertain a motion. If there's no discussion on the part of board members.
Tomo, Bessie Smith. For approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second, this is Rudy Morton.
All right. All those in favor, please vote by roll call, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Neubert? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I have seven yes, you're a no.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniel. Just a point of information, Mr. Clark and Ms. Daniel, I got a text from Ms. Baymar-Tow. She says she's sorry. She woke up sick today and it is not COVID and she will miss the meeting on today, okay?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next case. I would now like to request a motion to consider case number 20-22-P zoning request pursuant to subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute 42-17-1. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. I will now call for a vote to hear this particular case. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Here, yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Smith? Yes.
We have two-thirds.
All right, thank you very much. At this particular time, we'll invite someone from Red River Resort LLC to make any comments relative to this application if you're present.
I don't think that there's anyone present from Red River Resort LLC, Mr. Chair.
Steve Sykes, I believe, is on the call actually, and I've asked him to unmute.
All right. And his last name is what, Ms. Emily?
I believe it's pronounced Sykes.
This is Steve Sykes, S-I-P-E-S.
All right, sir. Please go right ahead and give us your name and address and zip code.
My name is Steve Sykes. Address is 1264 Wells Island Road here in Shreveport. Zip code is 71107.
All right, thank you, sir. Would you care to tell us a little bit about this project and what you, why you're requesting this?
Yes, sir, I will. I have purchased right at 10 acres on the 3049 highway under the 220 bridge, which is the Dixie-Shreveport highway. It's been at a, the property has been a total chaos and filled with debris forever, and I know the city has been contacted about it several times. I have cleared the property. I'd like to turn it into a small cabin rental resort area right on the river. It's a beautiful place. It's not going to be a big outfit, maybe four cabins, four RVs, and four primitive campsites for people to finally have a place on the north end of Red River to enjoy and come out and camp out and have more water sports on that end of the property as, as they do on the south end of Red River in Bossier. That is my request and that is what I'd like to do, and I have had numerous responses from the people who live up and down 3049 all the way to Belcher who have just praised me for what I have done with this property. It's a shame it hadn't been done sooner and I'm glad I had the opportunity to take on this venture and do it.
Well, all right, sir. I tell you what, having gone up and down that road, it truly has made a difference already before anything is going up. Do we have any questions for this gentleman at this time?
Yes, this is Bessie Smith. I want to know, have you met with any of the neighbors in that community?
Have I interviewed any neighbors?
Yeah, have you met with them? Explain what you're trying to do.
Oh, absolutely. I actually do not have any neighbors. The closest neighbor on 3049 probably lives a mile from me, but it's a daily routine that someone that travels that highway stops me and thanks me so much for clearing out that pig pen that has been there for 40-plus years. And the site is beautiful and I did attach some before and after photos that I submitted via email, which I hope y'all received. I also submitted a letter from the mayor of Belcher who has also praised me for what I have done with the property and actually cannot wait to get down there and enjoy it on the north end of the Red River.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions, board members?
Yes, this is Rudy Morton. How many permanent structures, how many permanent structures are going to be on the property?
There's going to be four permanent structures, and I did send a photograph through via email with one that we have built. They're ten by twenty. There'll be four permanent cabins, period. There will be a space available for primitive camping, which allow no utilities. And there will be, in my proposal, a place for four total overnight RV spots. Twelve total. I don't want anything bunched up. I want people to have their space, their freedom. So I have elected only to put that few in there. And I think I sent a photo. I know I sent it.
Yes, sir. We're looking at it right.
Okay, yes, sir.
We're looking at it right. You go. Any more questions from board members?
If I buy chair something, Mr. Chair?
Please.
All that is before you today is the actual rezoning of the property. Once that, if that is done, then a pre-application conference will be conducted, and a site plan will be submitted for approval. But we're just asking for the approval of the rezoning from I-2 to open space for the cap.
That is correct. When I applied for, there was a homeowner that had lived on the property for fifty years. They operated a puppy farm. The place was a mess. Once we bought the property, we cleaned it up, and I went to try to get my electricity turned on to make better improvements of the property. I was denied any electrical service, even though it had been turned on for the last fifty years, until I went through this process of getting it rezoned. And I was told when it was rezoned, they would come out and turn the power on, which would help me immensely to do what I need to do out there. But I am very aware of the procedures after the rezoning is done.
All right, sir. At this time, is there anyone else present or online who would care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone online who would care to speak in opposition to this request? Do we have any opposition to this request? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a motion for a vote, please.
Rudy Morton, I move to accept.
Who's second, please, neighbor? All right, call for the vote.
Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Have seven yes, your name.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next case. I would now like to request a motion to consider Case Number Twenty-Point-Fifty-One-C, Special Use Permit and Site Plan Pursuant to Subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute Forty-seven-one. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. At this particular time, we'll entertain a roll call vote to address this case.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We have two-thirds.
Thank you very much. At this particular time, I believe we have some information relative to a request for a referral, am I correct?
It's my understanding that there may be someone like to speak in reference to this case on the call, Mr. Chair?
All right. We now are going to provide an opportunity for whoever's on the call to speak on this case right now. Please state your name, address, and telephone number, zip code.
This is Andy Craig with Moore and Associates, thirteen-twenty-four North Hearn, Suite Three-O-One, Shreveport, seven-eleven oh seven. I'm the applicant representing the owner for this project. It's been before you numerous times. And we are very close to getting an agreement with the neighbor to finalize this. We just weren't able to do it again within the timeframe that we had, so we have submitted a request to defer yet one more time for thirty days. And we are committed to bringing it to a conclusion for the March meeting. I'll be glad to have any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I have one. Did I understand you to say you all will be meeting with the neighbors again? Because this is about the third time, I would believe.
Yeah, that's right. And we were right up, been able to get it done. There's some paperwork we have to get done, legal paperwork or a servitude of passage. They just, we weren't able to get done in time, but it's been required for what is proposed right now. So we're just waiting on that to get finished up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Craig.
Any more questions?
Can I ask a question, Andy? This is for Newbert. So you guys have actually reached an agreement. It's just a matter of paperwork?
We think so. Until they sign, you know, we don't know, but we have, verbally, as I understand it, everyone's agreed. But we still have yet to receive the signed paperwork.
All right, any more questions? At this particular time, we'll entertain a motion to consider the request for defer.
I make a request to defer. This is Bessie Smith.
All right. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right.
I have a second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Daniel.
Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
You're muted, Curtis.
Yes. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, your name.
All right, thank you. The request for defer and continue has been approved. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I'd just make one observation.
Please.
To share with the board that this is a process that we as MPC staff have been working on for over a year. And that's the ability of neighborhoods and businesses to collaborate on efforts that directly impact their neighborhoods. In a lot of instances, there's an impact from a business perspective, and there's an impact that's felt from a neighborhood, a residential perspective. This was our first case that we set out to initiate this process. It's been a very positive process that had possibly drug out over a period of time. But I think that this is helping us to understand the problems that are associated with ensuring that these processes work. And we are very optimistic that this will be the beginning of something very positive for the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo in the future.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, I would agree with you. It's been a long process, but I believe at the next meeting in March, they will reach some conclusions.
Yes, ma'am. We had asked them to reach a conclusion at the next meeting in March. I would just share with you the process that they had gone through.
Right.
They had initiated this process, and it shows when there are disagreements, that disagreements can be resolved.
Right.
Sometimes it takes a little time, but we feel that it's a whole lot better than a neighborhood just saying no without giving an applicant an opportunity to explain and work with the neighborhood to come up with a common solution.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, you're quite welcome. I would now like to request a motion to consider Case Number Twenty-Point-Eight-five-C, Small Plan Unit Development and Site Plan Pursuant to Subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute Forty-two seventeen-one. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. At this particular time, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to defer.
I'm sorry?
I make a motion to defer.
You're not there yet. You got to.
We're not at that point, not yet. We got to, we'd like to hear it first. Okay, we're voting to hear this particular case, Mrs..
Ms. Andrews? Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
All right, thank you, Ms. Daniel. Do we have someone online who'd care to speak in reference to this particular case?
Yes, again, this is Andy Craig with Moore and Associates, thirteen-twenty-four North Hearn, Suite Three-O-One, Shreveport, seven-eleven oh seven. In light of what Mr. Clark just said, we, last week, we were requested by the local council person to delay this case for another month in order to have some neighborhood meetings, just to make sure that everyone in the neighborhood is aware of what's going to be done there. In short, an existing liquor store is going to be updated, a new store built, and modernized, a new parking lot. There are three existing buildings on that site. It's going to go to one. But anyway, the council person was very concerned about making sure that the neighborhood was informed of what was going on. So, of course, we didn't have time to arrange a meeting, but we're working on that now, and we'll keep the MPC staff involved in this important process.
All right, Mr. Craig, is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in reference to this particular case? Would there anybody just happen to be online who'd care to speak in opposition before we move forward? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Hearing none, there's a request to defer and continue. We need to ask them for a motion to that point. Who made the motion, please, neighbor? Can we get a second?
Second.
Second.
Bye. Who made the second? I'm sorry? Morton, very good. We have a motion and a second. Please vote by roll call, either yes or no. Ms. Daniels?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Dale?
Yes, sir.
We're voting.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Have seven yes, your name.
Thank you very much. At this particular time, I would now like to request a motion to consider Case Number Twenty-Point-Nine-two-C, Special Use Permit and Site Plan Pursuant to Subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statute Forty-two seventeen-one. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. I am now calling for a motion to hear this case.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Laura? You're muted. Over.
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
We have two-thirds.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Daniel. Before us is a request from applicant Newman's Marchives Incorporated. Is there someone present or online that would care to speak in reference to this case?
Yes, this is Mike Newman with Newman Marshes Architects. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have, one of the owners, Randy Scoggins, was also supposed to be able to participate. I don't see his name. Do you think he's owned this? The applicant is the old Highland Baptist Church. It's owned by the Highland Center now. It's a nonprofit, and they are trying to find an appropriate use for approximately a hundred thousand square feet for their existing facilities. The site plan that you have in front of you shows what's existing. Their desire at the moment is to bring into this a community center that would serve all the nonprofits that they can support and provide a one-stop-shop-type operation for the community. In addition to that, they may have some of these operations that are for-profit but fit their mission statement as a charitable organization. And so we are requesting both nonprofit and for-profit operations. You can see from the application that we have balanced the parking requirements so that the full center is used, and we have supported the documentation with the appropriate parking calculations. At this point, I would yield to anybody that has questions.
Oh, Newman, I'm not sure if we got your address and zip code. I may have not been paying attention.
Okay, my address, the address is twenty-eight-hundred Yuri Drive, Suite Three-Ten, seven-eleven oh four.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who's online that would care to speak on behalf of this request from the Highland Center? Do we have anyone else who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none, do we have anyone online who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Do we have any opposition to this request? Hearing none, I invite board members, if you have any questions at this time. Hearing no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to refuse.
Motion to accept.
Please give us your name when you make the motion.
Oh, Bessie. It was second by Bessie Smith.
All right, very good. Roll call, Ms. Daniel.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newbert?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Have seven yes, your name.
All right. Board members, thank you very much. At this particular time, we'll move on. I'd like to request a motion to consider Case Number Twenty-Point-Nine-five-C, Special Use Permit and Site Plan Pursuant to Subsection D of Louisiana Revised Section Forty-two seventeen-one. As a reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. Is there anyone present or online who care to speak relative to the lot Downtown Shreveport LLC?
Have to.
Move to consider.
Have to consider, Mr. Chair. I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm just.
Move to consider. This is Morton.
All right, we have a motion to consider.
Second, Joseph.
Second by Mr. Joseph. All right, roll call, Ms., uh, Daniel?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newberg?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
You have two thirds.
All right, thank you very much. This particular time, do you have anyone from Lot Downtown Shreveport LLC online? Ms. Emily, did, did you receive any requests from anyone, uh, to be on for this particular case?
Yes, we do have, I believe Edgar Guzman is calling in.
Say that name again, please.
Edgar Guzman?
Hello?
Mr. Guzman?
Yes.
Would you please state your full name and your address, including the zip code, please?
My name is Edgar Guzman. My address is two fifty-two Piermont Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh five zip code.
Great. Please, uh, tell us a little bit about this request.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Please, go ahead and tell us a little bit about your request today.
Um, yes, we're, we wanna have, um, a food truck parked there at the old Fort Trans bus station. And we're wanting to be able to have, um, a commissary as well to be able to have food trucks there. And we wanna be able to have a restaurant, a small restaurant, just, uh, so we could have, uh, the ability to also serve, uh, alcoholic beverages. Um, we're looking to do, um, you know, like movie nights out there. We, we wanna have a, uh, uh, COVID-safe environment. This is such a large area to be able to space out. Um, it's gonna allow us to be able to have, have things going on and still be in a safe, safe place where, you know, it's, it's an entire block that we're able to use there. So with a lot of things moving away from being inside, it allows us to do some of these things outside now. So that, that's what we're looking to do there.
All right. Are there any questions from board members for this gentleman?
Yes, I have one, Bessie Smith. How many food, food, food trucks are you talking about?
Um, there's, there's gonna be probably roughly about seven, uh, that we could fit there equally spaced out with, um, about fifteen feet apart from each other. Uh, I'm not sure if that's gonna be on a regular basis, but that's how many we can fit there.
Does someone have the arrow? Can you put the arrow on those food truck spaces? I believe, there you go. There we go. Any more, any questions for this gentleman? Any comments? Well, hearing none, thank you very much. There is there anyone else online who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone online who care to speak in opposition to this food truck park request? Anyone in opposition who care to speak? All right, hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Board members? I believe I heard someone say something.
Joseph, motion to approve.
All right.
Morton, second.
Second, Bessie.
We have a motion by Mr. Uh, Joseph and a second by Mr. Morton. Uh, we'll call for vote, Ms. Daniel.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yeah.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newberg?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
You have seven yes, you're amazed.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Daniel.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I would now like to request a motion to consider case number twenty dash one nine seven dash C, preliminary site plan for existing planned unit development pursuant to the subsection D of Louisiana Revised Statutes forty-two dash seventeen dash one. As a matter of reminder, consideration of this case in a virtual setting will require.
That's it, baby.
Will require a two-thirds vote and a majority vote to pass. We will now have a roll call vote to hear. Need a motion?
So move, Joseph.
Motion by, second by Ms. Newberg, Ms. Daniel?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newberg?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
You have two thirds.
All right, thank you very much. Then the motion's carried. All right, let's see where we are. Do we have anyone here to speak, uh, on behalf of this case?
Uh, yes, um, Mark Snow with IA Finner, Jolly McClellan.
All right, Mr. Snow, please go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Mark Snow with IA Finner, Jolly McClellan. My mailing address is three zero zero three Knight Street, Suite one twenty, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh five. And, uh, today I'm here to present, uh, a site plan that y'all have seen about four years ago. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan that was approved for, uh, the PUD. Um, and what we're up here against is, uh, there'd been no development on the property, uh, due to, we've had, we've seen several people looking at it. It's been considered, uh, with several prospects. Uh, we just haven't landed one yet. And as soon as we land one, we'll be building. Uh, what you see in front of us, of you is the, uh, site plan for a three hundred and thirteen acre development for Frank's Investment Group. Uh, right now, we're planning on, uh, two large facilities, one about one point four four, uh, million square feet. The others in phase two would be one point, uh, about a million square feet in development area. Uh, accompanying that would be the associated parking lots, uh, detention ponds, roadways, utilities, um, and the other amenities, uh, to help buffer our community, uh, ourselves from the adjacent lots. We have a hundred fifty-foot dense wood buffer on the east, west, and, uh, north side. We have Greenwood Road or, uh, along the southern portion. Uh, I know there was, um, something said yesterday about construction going on out there. What we're doing is we're clearing about a hundred plus acres of the property because when we show the site, it's got such dense foliage, it's hard for people to see the forest because of the trees. So, uh, the Frank's Investment Group are spending a, a lot of money to kind of add to the ability for, uh, prospects to see the site. Uh, there's been a lot of interest in the site. There's been a lot of, uh, if you talk to the NLE people, people or the EDA people, there's been a lot of interest in the site that we've been in the running and, uh, close to being a finalist for several facilities. We just haven't landed them yet. So today what we're asking for is just a renewal of the PUD that y'all approved, uh, back in two thousand sixteen. Uh, I'll entertain any questions, uh, that you may have.
All right, you're, Mr. Snow, um, board members, uh, let's bear in mind the hurdle of this preliminary site plan is all that we're dealing with today. Do you have any questions for Mr. Snow? Hearing none, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this particular request?
Mr. Andrews, I would like to. This is Sheena Bryant from the North Louisiana Economic Partnership. I'd like to speak in favor.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Please go right ahead.
Um, I work with the North Louisiana Economic Partnership, which is a regional economic development group that represents fourteen parishes in North Louisiana. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My mailing address is three 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 Texas Street, Suite four eleven, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero one. And I'd also like to take the time to thank the MPC for its continued partnership on our, all of our economic development initiatives. The staff has been wonderful to work with. And I'm here today to demonstrate our support for the I twenty Greenwood Road's PUD preliminary site plan renewal. And from our perspective, having the right product to market is critical for our industry. And I twenty Greenwood Road is a greenfield site that's been certified by Louisiana Economic Development as well as AEP SWEPO, which has provided ample due diligence um, on this greenfield. And that due diligence makes it easier for us to move through the site selection process, which is really a site elimination process. So simply put, it allows us to be able to answer the necessary questions. And there's only five certified sites, five indus- certified industrial sites over a hundred acres in North Louisiana within one mile of an interstate. And I twenty Greenwood Road is the only site that is immediately off of I twenty in northwest Louisiana. We've found that visibility is also very important to many of the companies we're working with. And unlike those other certified sites, I twenty Greenwood Road is one of the few that actually offers the visibility to a larger audience along I twenty tra- the I twenty traffic. And as Mr. Snow mentioned, this site has been seriously considered for many strong projects. And we have no reason to believe that it would not continue to be considered for those large distribution and light manufacturing projects. Um, this site plan has been such a benefit to us. It's been able to provide a visual to our prospective companies and the consultants that we're working with because it clearly defines all of the PUD requirements. And, you know, it basically helps them imagine the potential of what that facility could look like. The characteristics of the site, the fact that it's certified, its strategic location, its size, its visibility, the fact that as a business-friendly owner, all make it ideal for a development. And this existing site plan is just an, another incredibly helpful tool to help us capture those new jobs and capital investment. So, um, thank you for the time and opportunity to speak about our support for this. And like Mark said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Bryant. Board members, if you have any questions for either one of these individuals? All right, hearing none, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none, is there anyone present online who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Giselle Proby Bryant. I am not speaking in opposition. Uh, my address is fifty-six thirty-five South Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I do own property very near that area. I know that this has been something the, uh, MPC has followed for several years. I guess my question to Mr. Snow is, what amount of extension are you asking for your PUD? And also have you gone back in and revisited the traffic study that may be a deterrent to individuals who want to purchase? Uh, it indicates that it is light industrial district, but anybody who travels to Greenwood Road extension, particularly at the industrial I twenty entrance, know that it is consumed with eighteen-wheelers and is, it is very difficult to navigate. So that may be a deterrent as to why you have not been able to move on your project. So as a concern, uh, citizen and taxpayer, I'm asking, anything we can do to boost our economy certainly should be, uh, at the forefront. But with the extension of this project ongoing, I would recommend that there be some revisiting as to what factors are prohibiting you from moving forward adversely. Thank you.
Mr. Snow, would you care to make any comments at all at this time?
Uh, yes, I do. And I appreciate your comments. Uh, yes, as, uh, we're, we're, us along with the, uh, economic development people are constantly evaluating how we can, you know, make this project property, uh, sell. And, uh, part of that would, i- in any work that we do in development, we will be doing a, a, updated traffic study. In fact, we're looking at, uh, that right now with, uh, Jim O'Yay with the DUD on some, the requirements that he would have on a current project we're looking at for that. So yes, we, we constantly update our infrastructure needs, our traffic needs, uh, to accommodate for that. Um, we, as, as Sheena probably can address better than us, a lot of times, uh, the, the process is, you know, you know, they're, they're looking for a way to eliminate. And, and sometimes it's not just the site, it's the incentives, it's the amenities. And then, and sometimes it's, uh, it's the community, what, what they have to offer the employees. So I appreciate your comment. Those things are looked at and whatever, uh, help from the community we can get for marketing and selling this project, we appreciate that. But yes, uh, we are looking at the traffic issues along, uh, Greenwood Road, uh, to, and, and solutions for that. And that's some of the things that we're including in, uh, the development plan for this site.
All right, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else who care to speak in opposition? All right, hearing none, and, and, uh, thank you for the rebuttal, Mr. Snow. Uh, at this particular time, um, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Newberg?
Second, Joseph.
We have a motion by Ms. Newberg and a second by Mr. Joseph. The call for, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everson?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Newberg?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
You have seven yes, you're amazed.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Daniel. The, the motion, the, the request is approved. This ends our public hearing. At this particular time, we will move further down on the agenda. Uh, then item number fourteen calls for old business committee chair reports for twenty twenty-one committee nominations. Uh, at this particular time, I'll take the privilege of, of saying to each of you that we did, uh, submit a list of, of potential committee members to be sent out to you. I would invite you, once you get that, to respond to Ms. Emmerly as to whether or not you'll accept that uh, responsibility or that role. I think that for those of you who had the privilege of being on the board for more than a couple of years, we don't get too bogged down with committee reports unless we were at a point where we're having to really address uh, special situations beyond control of the executive director's staff. Having said that, I would invite each one of you to please accept that responsibility that you'll be receiving in the mail. And if you have any question, please give me a call and we'll certainly try to, uh, answer your question. Or if you decide you just can't do it, we'll figure out how to, uh, involve other board members in that particular role. Uh, having said that, any question? If not, we'll move to item fifteen under new business. Uh, is there any information relative to research, Mr. Paul?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'd just like, uh, very briefly, uh, number one, I'd like to share with you that, uh, Mr. Deputy Director Stephen Jean is not with us today. He's at home resting. Uh, he may be on my heels of trying to see, as you get older, you see it becomes more difficult. And he was uh, having, uh, uh, cataract, uh, surgery today. And we asked him to just stay at home and cut everything off and rest and be prepared to come back at a later date. But I wanted you to know why he was not here and the reason that you were not seeing him. But, uh, after that, very briefly, uh, But, uh, after that, very briefly, I'm gonna ask, uh, Adam Bailey to, to share with you some of the projects that we're working on right now. I hope he's still, uh, online. This is sometime at any convenience you can't see people. But I hope he's still online and he could share with you some of the, the projects that we're working on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, uh, the community planning is continuing to work on a, a new and updated, uh, website. If y'all have, uh, been to the MPC's website, uh, recently, we, we've added some new icons. That has nothing to do with the project we're working on. But some of the stuff that, uh, we will be introducing in the next six to seven months, or, or we're gonna give that kind of same appeal, uh, to where, uh, users can easily identify where to go. So anyway, Granicus out of, uh, Minnesota is working with us. We have weekly meetings. Uh, the progress is going on very smoothly. And I'll give you all updates next month and on a monthly basis, uh, until that, uh, project is complete. We are also working on, um, some, uh, neighborhood association engagement on our website, uh, to be able for all neighborhoods to easily, um, have contacts when their meetings are and whatnot. That's gonna be on our current website as well as the new one. But moving, uh, forward with that project, uh, we're going to start engaging, uh, in some community planning, uh, in hopes of developing some neighborhood plans. Uh, I think initially the, the neighborhoods we've identified are Cedar Grove, uh, Allen Dell and MLK. Uh, you can give me a nod, Mr. Clark, but those are the ones, yes. So those are the ones that, uh, we have, uh, identified. Uh, we're also, uh, working on, uh, reaching out to stakeholders. We're gonna have a couple of public forums in the next several weeks when it comes to transient vacation rentals and short-term rentals. Uh, we've talked to some cities. We've got some good feedback. Uh, we've even figured out a way to contact Airbnb. But over the next two to three months, uh, we plan on having a lot of citizen engagement and in hopes of being able to bring before the board in April, um, some possible, uh, new standards for Airbnbs. We are did, um, working diligently, uh, for, with, uh, CAF, uh, for the Planning Area Development Code. Problem, Mr. Clark, you probably might wanna touch on that, um, a little more than me, so I won't butcher that, uh, too terribly. Uh, but we are, uh, we have gone through the January process of receiving feedback from the public. Uh, by the end of this week, we hope to release the February draft, uh, in hopes of, of presenting, uh, a document to the Caddo Parish, uh, Long Range Committee in March. That's all I have on my list, Mr. Clark.
Uh, I have a question. I heard you call several areas, but I'm wondering about Stony Hill. When do you all plan? Because we are very active in the Stony Hill area.
If, if I just made, Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, it is our plan to address every neighborhood in the city of Shreveport with assisting with, uh, developing neighborhood plans and, and so forth. We're, we've just decided to start out with these three neighborhoods, uh, because of, of the volume of, of citizens and so forth, uh, and certain unique qualities about, uh, these particular neighborhoods. But, uh, we will be surely coming to Stony Hill. We're not forgetting about Queensburg. We're not forgetting about, uh, Moattown. We're not forgetting about any of the inner-city neighborhoods. But these were the three that we wanted to launch this effort of and get our feet good and wet, um, before we go out into the additional neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think you know the reason why I'm saying that I've talked to you about something already in the Stony Hill area. And the citizens did not know the zoning had changed. And I think you know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely. And that's why I shared earlier in this conversation, uh, we are getting deeply embedded in the neighborhood participation plan. And we just think it's, it's gonna be, uh, one of the greatest things that we've done, bringing back that neighborhood participation and making sure that neighbors are always aware of everything that's coming into the neighborhoods and all of the changes that are carrying with the, uh, UDC. And once we get this under control, you and all the other residents of the city of Shreveport, uh, with the additions, uh, and the modifications to the webpage and the other, uh, electronic mediums that we're gonna be using, we're gonna make certain that citizens of Shreveport and Caddo Parish are well aware of everything that's happening and having input, uh, into everything and every recommendation that we are making to you.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'm looking for, and this is just as unusual for me as it is for you. I'm accustomed to having people looking at me. But, uh, yeah, I'm gonna ask if Reginald Jordan is, 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 uh, on, out there and alive so that he can talk to you about the, the comparison between, uh, businesses, business opportunities in commercial locations and in residential locations.
Thank you. Mr. Reggie?
All right. Well, how y'all, how y'all doing today, uh, uh, Chair, Mr. Chair and, and other members of the board? Good afternoon. Okay. All right. I do have some numbers to share with y'all. You know that right now we're in, 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 in a COVID time. These times are, are very different than, than any other times that we've had. So I shared with Mr. Clark these, these numbers and these comparisons, and, uh, he asked me to share them, share them with y'all. So just, oh, just as you know, in twenty twenty, excuse me, we had, you know, the COVID hit. So we, business in Shreveport, it really, it really didn't slow down. Uh, it just kinda changed models. It went more from a, a commercial-based business, more to the home-based business. But business, business as, as a whole still did good. So in twenty nineteen, we had commercial COs that were issued, it was four hundred and thirty. Now, this is from, this is from April of, uh, April first of March nineteen to the end of the year, December thirty-first, uh, March, uh, of twenty nineteen. So at the same time, pretty, pretty much when, from when COVID came into effect of this year in comparison. So, uh, we, we had four hundred and thirty-eight COs that were issued commercially in twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty, we had four hundred and sixty-six, which that was the whole year of twenty twenty. But you can still see that business still did real good. Uh, your, your home-based business in twenty nineteen, you, you had a total of two hundred and twelve. Now, in twenty twenty, this is where you see the big difference. You had four hundred and seventy-four. You had most COs issue for home-based businesses in twenty twenty than you had for commercial businesses. And in comparison to twenty nineteen, you had over, over double the amount. You had two hundred and twelve in twenty nineteen, and in twenty twenty, you had four hundred and seventy-four. So business, business is still, is still doing real good, uh, still on the upclimb. So, uh, that's all I can say, that we, we still looking good in Shreveport.
Thank you so much.
All right.
There are no questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. It sounds really good. I, I think it's important that, that you guys continue to share that with our local governing bodies, because quite often we hear persons get up to a microphone and says, "Shreveport dying and ain't no business going on." And that's quite contrary to the report that I just heard, unless I'm, uh, uh, not listening quite well.
You're absolutely right, sir. And that's what we, why we like to get that information out there, that Shreveport is alive. Shreveport is open for business and representative of the numbers that we're sharing. Uh, Shreveport is continuing to grow, maybe not at the rapid pace that we would like for it to be growing, but it is still on a constant upturn with growth.
All right. Well, thank you very much for those comments. We had item sixteen. Is there any other matters to be reviewed by the board? This is the time. If not, uh, Mr. Clark, two things. I'm gonna invite Ms. Emily to, once again, um, be kind enough to send out the link for each one of us to, to go online and do the ethics training, because it is important that we all qualify. Uh, I've done it two or three times and every year they improve it, so it gets easier and easier to do and there's no failing grade. Is that right, Mr. Joseph? There's no failing grade on doing the ethics training? Say yes. There's not. All right, Mr. Park, this is your opportunity to make that speech we requested. And as soon as you feel like you're comfortable in saying that's it, then we'll, we'll get the hammer out over here.
Yes, sir. I, 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 I feel extremely humbled, uh, today. I've been in planning and with the Metropolitan Planning Commission for twenty-six years. And when I started, uh, we would go to conferences in South Louisiana and everybody would be making jokes about the like of planning and the like of, uh, any organized efforts, uh, in North Louisiana. Our cohorts to the south, or we had the School of Planning at the University of New Orleans and all of the, the planning, uh, firms in New Orleans and LSU in Baton Rouge and so forth. And they felt like we were just up here, uh, lost and, uh, forgotten. Uh, I made it my business to, to stop them, uh, and to make them aware of something. And that's how they got to know me and to make them aware that I was very proud to be a resident of Shreveport Caddo Parish. I was very proud to be a part of North Louisiana and that we were not inferior by no means or no method, method to them. That in actuality, we were better than them. Uh, and over the years, that allowed me to work, uh, very closely with the Louisiana Chapter of APA and the National Chapter of APA, uh, serving on the Executive Committee, uh, with the State Chapter. I was able to, to ensure that a lot of things that had eluded, uh, North Louisiana from planning perspectives were brought here. As you well know, we had some interesting conferences. Uh, we are still in the process of ensuring that, uh, board members are properly trained. Uh, but, uh, at all of the things that have gone along with it, uh, I never expected, uh, in my wildest dreams, to receive a leadership award from the Louisiana Chapter of APA. I think that this is one of the, the more special moments that I've had. It says something about the chapter, right? And I guess in a, in a slight way, it says something about me and my ability to be a leader. But I'm very proud to, to be a leader here with the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Uh, I think that we have, and I can never not, uh, share the information about the staff. I think we have one of the, the best staffs in the state of Louisiana, in the southern region, in the, uh, United States. They are very hardworking individuals, uh, they're very dedicated individuals and they do an incredible job. And they are the reason that I was able to be considered for this award. I, I, I thank them because it's because of them that, uh, persons notice the, the many things that are happening in Shreveport and notice the positive things that are happening from the Metropolitan Planning Commission. We are committed, uh, as I said earlier, we are committed to ensuring that we provide all the information available to the citizens of Shreveport Caddo Parish so that they understand who we are, what we do, and the fact that we are the biggest cheerleaders, uh, that there are in Shreveport and Caddo Parish for the citizens and the city. And we're very proud. Uh, I'd just like to share one thing with you, because I'm so proud of, uh, when we have these real troopers. Uh, Ms. Alice Correa, this morning, uh, and she's gonna be extremely angry, but that's one of the privileges of being the executive director. Uh, you can, you can get away with these things. She had gone to the dentist and had a tooth pool. Uh, and, uh, generally when people go and have a tooth pool, they go home, I guess, and, and take care of themselves. And as my grandmama used to say, goggle their mouth with Epsom salt, uh, until they get better. But I'm very proud and pleased to say, uh, Alice is sitting to my right right now. She sat through this entire hearing and she's participated by providing me with the information needed for the cases. And with these type of employees, I just wanted to share that with you. These type of employees make you extremely proud to be the executive director of the Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Commission. And I'm very thankful to each and every board member for the support that you all give to me and this, this, this staff. And I, and I, I will at a later time thank, uh, the members of the Louisiana Chapter of the APA, because there are many of them statewide. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you very much. I, I, I'm gonna say to Mr. Bailey, I assume that you guys, as, as a supporting staff, will follow through on the appropriate, um, uh, public, uh, release of this particular, uh, honor that he's receiving at the appropriate time. Can we depend on that?
Uh, yes, sir. We, uh, will be, uh, issuing a press release, uh, by end of day.
And make sure, Mr. Bailey, y'all evacuate the room that he's in, because when his head starts to swell up, you're off, y'all, to be.
I would just like to say, this is Bessie, and I would just like to thank Mr. Clark and his staff. Y'all really works as a team. Really do like to see teamwork. Keep up the good, good work.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing?
Please go right ahead.
Well, I think we're the fortunate ones to get Alan to stay with us. Uh, I, I've been here fifteen years. I started with Mr. Kirkland. Uh, as you know, we've had several changes at the top, the executive director level. But we're the ones that are fortunate to have Alan. Alan's door is always open. Alan never makes a quick call. He listens to all sides and lets everybody get their opinion on the table before he decides where to move forward. And as everybody knows, when we had our last director to leave, there was a lot of people in town, in parish commission, city council, that wanted to go out for a national survey, a national search, when we had our gym in our office.
Right.
So if we would have done that, we would have overlooked the best person for the job. So I'm glad we didn't do that at that time. Thank you, Alan.
Yeah.
Okay. I will entertain a motion on that note.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call, Ms. Daniel?
Roll call.
She got caught up in my speech, Mr. Chair, and lost everything.
You ready? Yes.
Ms. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Everston?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Morton?
Yeah.
Newberg?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
This is again Alan. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Yes, you're quite welcome, sir. I have shot this shirt over here, I can tell you. I, I'm glad I put on deodorant.
That's good quarterbacking over there, uh, Mr. Windsor.
Oh, it's been tough, boy. I tell you.